The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
Okay, welcome everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order, our regular board meeting for July 25th, 2022. We're gonna start with, well, first of all, I'd like to welcome our interim superintendent, Vicky Byer, members of our cabinet, ICSC students Macy Saha and Sawyer Mons, and we're gonna start with a roll call. McCoy?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Melz?
Here.
Welch?
Here.
Becker?
Here.
Leighton and Warren?
Here.
Lyerly?
Here.
Okay, everyone is present, and would you all please rise to give the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, it's our mission statement. Brian?
We educate all students to be college, career, and community ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
Thank you. Next is our land acknowledgement statement, which I'll read. "We, the members of the Green Bay area public school district, recognize and honor the original inhabitants of northeast Wisconsin. Our district lives, works, and learns upon the ancestral homelands of the Menominee and Ho-Chunk nations, and the current homeland of Oneida Nation. We acknowledge the twelve diverse and vibrant Wisconsin First Nations who have persevered here since before recorded time and continue to be integral parts of our community. We uphold our responsibility to repair relationships, initiate partnerships, and stand with all First Nations communities." Next is our open forum. Kinsey, do we have anybody? Okay, all right, then we're gonna move on to the inner-city student council report. Do you guys have anything for tonight?
We didn't have anything.
Well, thank you for joining us, though. Okay. Okay, so then we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone want to withdraw any items on the consent agenda to discuss separately? If not, I would entertain a motion. Anyone wanna read the motion?
I move that the consent agenda items as presented be approved.
Second.
Okay. Do we have to vote on this separately?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. The next is, next, we're gonna move on to action items. Yeah, so our first item is posting of standards. Vicky?
So as mentioned back in June and then earlier this month, state law requires the district to provide parents and guardians of all enrolled students notice of our academic standards in math, science, reading, writing, geography, and history that have been adopted by the school board, and this motion then is to accept the standards.
Okay, any discussion, any questions? Okay, you wanna read the motion, Tom? Oh, no, I'm sorry, I already asked Nancy if she would do it. Go ahead, Nancy.
I move that pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 120.12 (13B), the list and description of the 2022-23 student academic standards in the areas of mathematics, science, reading and writing, geography, and history as presented, and with said academic standards constituting the board-adopted standards that are required under Wisconsin Statute Section 118.30 (1GA) be approved.
Second. Okay. I think we're ready to vote.
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to the second item, the initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds. I believe we're going to hear from Josh.
Yeah, and I'll start this one out. We have two resolutions for the board. The first is to authorize the amount obligation, and the second is to authorize the question that would go on the ballot in November. Just note that GBAPs has consistently continued to be fiscally responsible when we do borrow these funds. The mill rate will go down regardless of whether the referendum passes or not, and this will address some needed updates that our facilities definitely need. Josh, any comments?
Yeah, I'm sure just a couple. Obviously, we've been talking about this a lot over the last couple of months here. It is absolutely true that the mill rate for the district will go down whether the referendum succeeds or fails, and even if the referendum succeeds, it will be the lowest mill rate since at least 1984, and it's likely the lowest mill rate ever. That's as far back as we can actually get data. I called the Department of Revenue, and they couldn't provide data prior to 1984 on that. I also wanted to add, we've been talking a lot, obviously, about the way that facilities can improve the student experience and the community experience, but there are some intangible things I think that we're able to do with this referendum. And I would be assuming the board votes yes here. I'd be very grateful that the board is authorizing these funds to allow students to take more pride in where they go to school. And then also, you know, for the taxpayers' sake, good schools and desirable schools drive up property values. It is a virtuous cycle. So I don't have too much else to say, but I am here to take any questions before you take this very important vote, these two very important votes.
Anybody else? We have had a lot of discussion about that. That's why there's kind of a, I mean, everyone here has had a long time to ponder this, discuss it, to talk to staff, to talk to constituents. I have heard from plenty of constituents who understand the importance of this, and we'll be heading into the fall as a group and staff as well, trying to inform the public about this process so that they have plenty of chances to have input and have their questions asked and answered as well. So we'll be entering that phase now, once we take these votes, and I'm sure that that it'll be an interesting process, and you'll be there every step of the way, as will all of us. So is there anything else?
Can I add one more thing? The last time I talked to the board about this, I had said that we were going to be meeting with the city because uniquely in this proposed referendum, we're addressing we're addressing things on city property that the district uses notably at West High School with their with their football fields and then also the playgrounds at both Dan's and Sullivan. We met with the mayor and his director of planning and his director of parks. They're very enthusiastic about these projects, and we will be working closely with the city on those projects to the point where they'll be providing input on design along with us. So this is a really unique opportunity to work very closely on the city, or with the city on this.
Yes, I have talked to some people who work for the city as well, and they, you know, they get it about this. And yeah, I'm looking forward to getting started. Go ahead, Brian.
In regards to that, are there plans for increased public access at West High School if the stadium or if the referendum passes as far as collaboration with the city to open that up more? Or just is that in the beginning stages as far as a plan with, particularly with that area? Yeah, I mean, that will definitely figure heavily into our design. Obviously, our first priority is making sure that our students have access to co-curricular and curricular spaces, right? For their educational experience, but we do have a goal to to allow as much community access as possible, and there are also some unique rental opportunities, I think, that might be available to us as well at West High School.
Anybody else? Okay, I think we're ready to vote.
I move that the initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed 92,605,000 as presented be approved.
Second. Now we're ready to vote.
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, motion passes. Moving on to C. Yep.
Yeah, the second motion is the actual ballot language. So upon approval of that second motion, we'll start to get this ballot off to our eight municipalities that comprise Green Bay area public schools to get it on the ballot for November.
Okay. Is there any discussion or any questions? Okay, can I have someone read the motion? Andrew?
I move that the resolution providing for a referendum election on the question of the approval of an initial resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed 92,605,000 as presented be approved.
Second. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, motion passes. Next is, yes, thank you very much, Josh. All right, next is, we're gonna talk about COVID protocols, and I will turn this over to Vicky.
Thank you, and thank you to the board for the conversation at the work session about this topic. Since that time, I have reached out to all of the Brown County school districts to find out what their plans are, and they are also proposing to their boards to go to pre-COVID protocols. Pam Wise is joining us today. She'll be available if there are any questions. Just wanted to acknowledge that she came tonight as a reminder. She is the district department chair for our nursing staff. Brown County Health is no longer tracing. This plan will follow the CDC guidelines as well as the Brown County Public Health guidelines, and Pam will continue to meet with Brown County Public Health throughout the school year to continue to monitor. So with that, turn it back to you, Laura, if there's any discussion or questions, and we have two motions.
Right. Anyone have any discussion or questions on this? Okay, so this motion, we have to insert a date here, I believe.
Melissa?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch that.
A date has to be picked that you would like this to go into effect.
Okay. Any guidance on how, what that, what date would be beneficial to, for this? I don't have a
We could do tomorrow, yes.
Okay.
Pam, could you join us, please?
So we're discussing this recommended motion, but we need a start date. Do you have a recommendation or a preference on that?
I would suggest tomorrow.
Okay. So the 26th. Just kind of stay put for a moment in case anyone has any input or, go ahead, Brian.
Moving forward with this, if we run into a similar situation again, which obviously we hope we don't, we now have the infrastructure set up within the county to quickly move where we didn't have that opportunity two and a half, three years ago, correct? And I'm sure there's gonna continue to be conversations regarding this with the Brown County schools and with the health department and other agencies that if something comes up, we are able to move quickly on it if need be and have a focused approach with it throughout communication with the county.
Sorry, yes, that is correct. At this time, the county continues with their COVID response team, and that's who I have been connected with, and that they will continuously evaluate the data. They continue to meet with the healthcare leaders to determine hospitalization rates and just to pull all of that data to make those decisions if they have to flip back into COVID response.
Anybody else? Okay. Would anybody like to read the motion with the date of 7/26/22? What's that?
Yes.
Go ahead, Brian.
I move that effective July 26, 2022, any tracing of close contacts and quarantining and isolating of district students and staff for COVID-19 purposes shall be discontinued by district staff and shall be the responsibility of the individual student or family or district staff member in accordance with the CDC guidelines.
Second. Okay, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, we're going on to E, COVID protocols, gating criteria for face coverings. And Vicky, I think you're up.
Okay, so on this one, we have two options for you. The first option is general, and then the second one, Melissa captured your thoughts from the last meeting and put together some more specific criteria, so we turn that over to the board for discussion.
Andrew?
Thank you. I think we reached a reasonable point in deciding that there should be, rather than an automatic trigger for masks or for greater interventions than that, to have the just have something that forces a board meeting if certain COVID triggers are reached. I don't I don't like the idea of getting rid of, get rid of the triggers to, because again, it only, it only triggers a meeting. There's no automatic masks. I think it there's, you know, of course, different levels of concern about where, you know, there's maybe more people for whom with vaccinations and with perhaps having exposure before are not in as serious risk, and there's still people today that even the current strains of COVID is a very, a very serious risk. And I think to have, to have something that says that if COVID COVID severity increases, we're maintaining our commitment that a special board meeting will be held, that the board can't just be silent on it. Do I think we would be? No, but rather than, rather than wait for someone else to make that call about the meeting, the decision would be made for us. That being said, it seems to me that to have three different triggers that have to be met is, is very complicated. I'm just looking for a little bit more information on that, and I also think there's something that says fewer when it should have said greater. So is the concern that because of where things are at with COVID reporting, that case numbers might not be accurate anymore? Is that where we're at?
Definitely, there is that concern with the availability of at-home testing. Individuals are doing it in the comfort of their home and not necessarily reporting.
Okay, so that, that being said, if the, you know, I guess I would say if the suggestion is that 20 individuals per 100,000 population for COVID admissions, and I guess I would, I'm kind of uncertain between and or, or the number of beds being 15%. Can you talk a little bit about that, how you arrived at, you know, the, I mean, the 20, 20 hospitalizations, 20 hospitalizations total per 100,000 per seven days, that's pretty straightforward, but as far as the as far as why the 15% target for hospitalization, 15% of beds being COVID.
So I believe that that particular data point is what the county was using in their decision-making when they would receive information from the healthcare systems. So that is where we pulled that information from, or that particular data point.
I'm good for now. I'll probably have more, but.
Go ahead, James.
So is the 15% supposed to represent the 20 patients, or are they two separate distinct data points?
There are two data points on there. Actually, it looks like, yeah, there's three. So, sorry, we hit the screen here. So it's your new COVID admissions and then the percent of the staffed inpatient beds. So how many, how many beds are being occupied at this time by COVID patients on a seven-day average? And then let's see, and then the per 100,000 people in the past three days or seven days. Actually, no, that's just two data points, because that's the title. Yep, and that's that one. Yes. Sorry, I apologize. I misspoke. So the two data points are fewer than 200 COVID, COVID admissions, seven-day running total, and then the percentage of staffed inpatient beds occupied by COVID patients. So there it is, and then the new COVID admissions. Yeah, yes. So what we're saying is accurate. We're pulling it right off of Brown County. Sorry, very confusing, looking at it in the grid.
That's, that's my concern, is how confusing it is, and can we explain it to our constituents?
So if you go on the Brown County website, they, they spell it out. The grid is confusing. That's what I've been reviewing. So the combination of three metrics, your new COVID admissions within the last seven days, the percent of staffed inpatient beds, and the total new cases per 100,000 in the population.
Are you good, James?
So I agree with Andrew, and I think you support his statement that the 100, sorry, the caseload per 100,000 people is a very vague term, a vague data point. And I would, I would argue that we should probably remove that from our gating criteria.
Go ahead. So we looked at, again, we're not the experts. The CDC and Brown County Public Health are the experts. So when we looked for a measurable data point that you had asked for beyond the percent of positive cases, this is taken right from the Brown County Public Health website. It says on February 25th, 2022, "The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention announced their new guidance and recommendations regarding COVID-19 to determine the current community level for, for each county. CDC looks at the combination of three metrics: one, new COVID-19 admissions per 100,000 population in the last seven days; two, the percent of staffed inpatient beds occupied by COVID-19 patients; and three, the total new COVID-19 cases per 100,000 population in the past seven days to determine the COVID-19 community level of spread. New COVID-19 admissions and the percent of staffed inpatient beds occupied represent the current potential for strain on the health system. Data on new cases acts as an early warning indicator of potential increases in the health system strain in the event of COVID-19 surge. Using this data, the COVID-19 community level of spread is classified as low, medium, and high." So then they break it down within those data points, and if there's fewer than 200 COVID cases in the past seven days, then there's a certain metric for new COVID-19 admissions and the percent of staffed inpatient beds. If it's 200 or more new COVID cases, then those percentages are less. So that's the purpose of the three data points.
So what was the date of that guidance again?
February 25th, 2022. That's the latest that came from the CDC. Are you good, James, for now?
So I would, I would argue that our ability to monitor and to quantify caseload has diminished since February, and I don't trust that number because I received my four in-home tests, and I've used a couple of them, and I know that many people that have are out because of COVID and they haven't reported. So I just we've lost our early warning. So I don't necessarily agree with it being part of our gating criteria that we have to explain to our constituents because I can't.
Which is fine, but then you're going to have to decide what on the other two criteria, what percentages you're going to want, numbers and percentage you're going to want to use. Because for the new COVID-19 emissions per 100,000 in the last seven days, if there's fewer than 200 cases, then they use the metric of 20. If there's more than 200, then they use the metric of 10. For the percent of staff inpatient beds occupied by COVID patients, they use the metric for fewer than 200 of greater than 15, I'm sorry, less than 15% or greater than 15%, sorry. And for 200 or more, they use the metric of greater than 10%. So you're just going to have to use, figure out based on those metrics, which ones you want to pick or something completely different. But again, we're not the CDC or the experts. So that's why we were using these data points.
But still, if it's faulty data, we don't want to use it. So if we get rid of it, I feel that that will be okay because what this is going to just trigger a meeting, right? That's what this is going to do. So and then when we have the meeting, then we can look into all the other things. But I think that, you know, I just know too many people that didn't report it. I don't think it's very accurate.
So one, and I I'm I have a motion I'm going to make and I that takes out the first one and addresses the other two and I emailed it to emailed it to Kinsey for purposes of reading it back coming in the minutes. It is very substantially, what we had here in the recommended motion is very substantially different that there was and in between the 200 cases, the hospital beds and the the percentage. So different as to completely completely change what the county had because it would have made much more of it red and almost none of it green. So right, because the Brown County is saying that whichever of the things are the highest will apply. Yeah, really? Use the highest level that applies to your community. So if it's high, if it's whichever, so.
Andrew, can you just direct us where you're seeing that?
Yeah.
Right down to the chart.
Yeah, Brown County is is the like in the title, the chart on Brown County WI Gov Community COVID-19 slash I assume that's where you were because I found a chart that was. So if we're using the highest level, you could have run into a situation, although my motion doesn't include the the count because it's not being reported in the same way as it was before. I think the combination of percentage of beds and new admissions should capture if there's something serious enough to to require a meeting. So I'm just going to make the motion. I move that effective 7/26/2022. Face coverings for all students, staff, visitors, and contractors shall be, one, optional inside and outside all district buildings and premises. Two, required in district buildings, premises, and district provided transportation in accordance with state and federal requirements. And three, where in Brown County, new COVID-19 admissions per 100,000 population, seven day total exceed 20 individuals or the percent of staffed inpatient beds occupied by COVID-19 patients, seven day average is greater than 15%. A special board meeting shall be held to determine if the district shall implement COVID-19 mitigation measures, including but not limited to face coverings.
Go ahead, Vicki.
And Pam, is that data that we can obtain from Brown County Public Health? Looks like it looks like it matches.
I believe so. Yes.
Okay, Melissa, can you think of any anything about this that would be problematic? No, again, we just used the three criteria and we were reading it as and because that's what Brown County had advised us as well as the healthcare providers that we asked about using that as the data point. So I think they're all reading it as and too. I can understand why that blurb on the top would lead you to believe only one needs to be in the red. But I I mean, that's you can use whatever data point you want. It's measurable. It's not us creating it. It's what they're using to determine what would be a high risk. So it seems to make sense. Okay, anyone else have anything to add to that? Go ahead, James.
So to or these statements together actually is a more conservative approach than ending them. And so for the purposes of a meeting, we it's a conservative approach, right?
Can we just can we just get a second before we have more discussion? Anyone want to second the motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Laura. All right.
I think it's a little easier to have them. It it makes it a little more likely to have a a meeting, but and carried the risk that if people just aren't reporting mild COVID cases anymore, that you could have, you could have had with the and. And I think that requires it it's very, it's very concerning to me that people who are saying that people are okay with ending these three things together are then saying, I don't think they meant to do that. I think the chart is probably correct because otherwise if you and the three together, you could absolutely reach a situation where a lot of mild COVID isn't being reported and the the hospital new admissions and the hospital percent could both be 23, 24. And yet the low number because it was and would prevent us from doing it. This that's why I think this motion is is better, but I'm very concerned that people think that it's okay to just and them together, which now we wouldn't be doing.
Okay. Go ahead, Brian.
Regarding the seven day average with the 15% hospitalization, I'm looking if I'm looking at this correct with the percentage with hospitalization, if we see a huge bump in hospitalization and it's recognized by the healthcare system, but the seven day average doesn't recognize that. So if 70 people get admitted on one day, do we have to wait until that percentage comes up? Or is there a wiggle room that we can hold a meeting at that point too? Am I am I clear on my question with that or? Thank you.
As we mentioned, Pam will continue to meet with them. If there's any concerning numbers that come up and it it wouldn't be addressed by this motion, we would bring it to the board anyway.
Okay. Any other concerns, any other questions? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Are we ready to vote? Okay, Kinsey?
I think we'll just do a voice vote if that's all right.
Yep.
McCoy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Welch?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Leighton and Warren?
Aye.
Lierly?
Aye.
All votes have been voiced and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. All right, we're moving on to F, which is independent hearing officer resolution for expulsions. Did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Just that this is the resolution that we will bring back yearly for authorization to continue with the process. An independent hearing officer to hear our expulsion hearings.
We've already discussed this at length. Does anyone have anything further they'd like to say? Andrew?
I'm going to be voting no on this motion. I supported an independent hearing officer as as a necessary measure during COVID and immediately after immediately after the snap changes by the previous presidential administration to Title IX interpretations that took forever to come through, but finally did. For me, I think the right of students to appear in front of the board would is important enough that I would take whatever, you know, take whatever CEU of Title IX training was the base basic standard and then make my best decision on expulsions based on you know, the safety of the students and the need for, you know, to keep people in some kind of education. So that's that's where I'm at. And this is, I also want to say this isn't reflection on the the quality of the hearing officers. I've heard that everything has gone very well in that in that process, but I did, I I said I had made a commitment to vote yes temporarily. And for me, for me, that temporarily has run out after two years. So thank you.
Anybody else? I would just say I'll be voting yes on this because the training is quite extensive. I think it's like seven hours or something like that. And with all the changes that are going to be heading our way, additional changes on top of the other changes, it's likely we'd all have to retrain again. And then there's the complexity of trying to get all the people at this board table who have day jobs and everything to to schedule those expulsion hearings. I've I've sat through many of them myself. It's not easy if you if you have a board who who is mostly has people who who work all day to get those people in a room to listen to expulsion hearings is is a real challenge, plus all the staff that has to go with it. So I'm going to be voting. I'm going to be voting yes for this. Anybody else? Okay, Kinsey, I think we're ready. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I move that the resolution for an authorization appointment of an independent hearing officer as presented be approved.
Second.
All right, now we can vote. Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion has carried. The results of the individual board member votes are as followed as follows. Smith, yes. Becker, no. McCoy, yes. Leighton and Warren, yes. Welch, yes. Lierly, yes. Mills, yes.
Okay, motion passes 6-1. Moving on to F, nope, I'm sorry, G. Rule 422.1, procedures for admitting and attendance of foreign exchange program students. No comments. Okay, is there any, there's a recommended motion. Is there any discussion? We have, we've already discussed this and I think we all understand why. And that was all at our last meeting. All right. Then I think can I have someone read the motion? Thank you. I move that the revision to the Board of Education Rule 422.1, procedures for admitting and attendance of foreign exchange program students as presented be approved. Second. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Motion carries. The next item is our board meeting schedule, which is always attached. And if there's no other further discussion about that or anything, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So move.
Second.
All in favor? I suppose. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.